All right, it's six o'clock and we have a forum, so we'll get started with the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, July twenty seventh. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty nine twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting and planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person. Or for those who wish to do so remotely made by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. And pursuant to MGL seven C thirty eight, section twenty F, after notifying the chair of a public body. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recording. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And finally, per section two forty one one of the town code. Except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote. At a time before a board votes on the item, such residents will be allowed as much time as proponents of an item is permitted to have. Alright, so we are being recorded and we are all here in the room, so I don't think we have to do a roll call. So we will begin with form A, so I don't believe we have any, etc. So no form A's, we'll move on to the minutes of June twenty second. We have a motion to approve this amendment. Thank you Jonathan, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Malcolm, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Third item on our agenda is chapter sixty one A, right of first refusal. Review and comment to the select board on whether the town should exercise or waive its chapter sixty one A. Right of first refusal to purchase one point six acres of land off Seacom Road, parcel seventy five, assessor's map thirty three. Mister Remble, do you? It looks like we may have the applicants.
And Andrew Hockford, in this case, so whenever the town has a read. Whenever a property is in the chapter sixty one A. The or chapter sixty one in program receives a beneficial tax assessment because it's in a recreational agricultural forestry use for the town. But in exchange for getting that reduced tax assessment, the owner agrees and the town places a lien on the property that says. When the property changes hands or is taken out of the chapter program or both. The town has a right of first refusal and can match any bona fide offer to purchase that land and purchase it for the town. Uh for forestry, agricultural, recreation purposes. So the common practice for Great Barrington is that the conservation committee and planning board would do these. Applications or notices, I should say notices. And provide comments to the select board. It's the select board on behalf of the town has the right to exercise the right of first refusal. Uh for assign the right of first refusal to the conservation agency. So in this case, we're looking for the board's recommendation to do this.
Okay, um so is everyone familiar with where this property is located? This is from the form A that came before us previously. And I don't know if the applicant or applicant's representatives had anything additionally wanted to say. Yeah, I guess if you if you what if there was anything you'd like to say, if either of you gentlemen want to raise your hand, we can certainly give you the opportunity to speak on the matter. Mister Hockford?
Uh good evening, thank you very much. Uh thi- this is a situation. Where Mister Jones and Mister Taylor have gotten together and tried to reestablish the James Weldon Johnson homestead of five acres. The land owned by Mister Taylor and it's going to be conveyed as a gift to Mister Johnson. Which is very easy for the town to match the the bona fide offer. Would would reestablish that five acre parcel of James Weldon Johnson. Very important uh a member of the Great Barrington community. As you know, he wrote Lift the Revoice and he was a is. Uh a very important member in the civil rights movement. And again, a a very important member of the town of Great Barrington and its history. So the intention here is to reestablish the five acre parcel. Mister Jones, through his foundation, the James Weldon Johnson Foundation. Also will have the right and hopefully the ability to purchase the remaining fourteen acres of Mister Taylor's land. And then would rededicate, we would keep that in chapter sixty one A. This really isn't a change of use because we're keeping the land, the one point six acre parcel in its natural state. Except of course, there was and and on Mister Taylor's land, there will be in the future. The James Weldon Johnson cat writing cabin. And Mister Jones intends to rehabilitate that cabin. And keep it as a historical monument with access to that cabin for Great Barrington and the public. So um uh from time to time, not not as a as as a. A fee based transaction, but to make it available for the historical record of Great Barrington. So we're hoping that the planning board, which has approved the Form A subdivision. Would also make the recommendation to this select board that they waive the right of first refusal. And allow the establishment of the James Weldon Johnson homestead. And I think it will be a great benefit to the town of Great Barrington as well. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. Um yes, Malcolm.
I can't think of anything the town could do better with this property than restoring the James Weldon Johnson homestead. So I think we should just send a positive recommendation to the select board if they waive the.
A recommendation.
Recommendation to waive the right of first refusal.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have to write a first refusal, recommend to waive.
I'll second.
And Pedro's seconding, do we have any further discussion on the matter, or remember? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Uh item number four on our agenda is Barrington Brook subdivision, a discussion and vote to release Form D covenant to allow sale of three homes on Thrushwood Lane. Previously released for certificate of occupancy only. Just before we get into that, should we shut this off?
It's right under the numbers.
Right under the numbers.
Under the numbers?
Yep.
If anyone gets too hot, let us know. Okay, alright. Um so it looks like there's just the leases there and Chris, did you want to introduce them?
Uh sure, I view this. Item for Barrington Brook really is an administrative matter. Because earlier this year, the planning board voted to release three of the lots that are under covenant. Uh out on Thrushwood Lane to release them so that they can at least be built upon. I'm sorry, that was several years ago. And then the planning board, having been assured that there wasn't much infrastructure work left. Said, okay, we'll let three of those go for certificate of occupancy. But didn't actually vote to. Sign the the covenant release. So as the uh developers attorney explained to me. What in fact is happening here is that the folks have the right to occupy their homes but not own them. So uh tonight, and I recommended a motion for you to allow the chair to sign covenant releases for those lots. In this case, there will be three lots on Thrushwood Lane. Included in the packet tonight with some information from the engineer, James Colleyce. Regarding the amount of work left to do out at Barrington Brook. And that's, I view that really as your as your for your information. Typically, when you look at Barrington Brook, you want a lot of information. So understanding that, we tried to provide everything you might need to get tonight.
I will admit, just given the timing and receiving the information from Mister Splice, I've not had a chance to review it. I don't know if other board members have, but I've been back down there in the last couple of weeks and it looked like things were progressing in a positive direction. So I don't know, do we want Jim to just give us a quick synopsis? Yeah?
I've, well, I'd really like him to answer the question, why isn't it all done? They've been working in this for twenty years. Why isn't the infrastructure actually done?
Um a fair question. Um there's uh some of the work that is included in that. I put a cost estimate together. It's generally consistent with what I told you in January. It's a little more specific. I've had staff down there, we've done as-built survey and we've we've observed. We've opened manhole covers to confirm things which we hadn't done and at least to my recollection ever or in a very long time. So we're kind of reinventing the wheel a little bit to to figure out exactly where things are. But the site is paved, there's really landscaping left. Some work isn't done because the developer hasn't done it yet. Uh some work isn't done because, for example, there's trees that are supposed to be planted in front of houses, but the houses aren't even started yet. So you know, there's there's a practical reason that some of the work isn't done. I would say. The majority, more than half of the work could be completed now. I think there's, um you know, there's some work in the detention basin in this area that could have been done. Several years ago, there's been a turnover in ownership and I think you know the whole tale of of woe as it relates to this project. But uh you know, the I think this is the first time that I have, at least for this owner, put together a very detailed list. And I think that's a progress, okay? There's certainly no excuse not to get things done now that it's. I took the subdivision drawings, I marked them up. They're uh, everything's digital. The owner has a copy as of Tuesday of this week. There's no reason why this work can't start. I wouldn't recommend, a lot of it's landscaping. I'm not sure I'd recommend planting that right now. Might be a little more appropriate to do that in the early fall. Whether, you know, with the wet, with the hot, with the with the heat, it's not a great time to be out there planting. But work on the detention basin and that sort of thing can all be scheduled. Frankly, I'm I'm pretty comfortable that you have seven COs in your back pocket. For houses that are probably worth upwards of a million dollars each. You know, to hold up a hundred thousand dollars worth of work that needs to get done. So I appreciate your uh your patience and and kind of completing the task we started in January. But um I'm encouraging and uh I'm I'm encouraging the owners and developers to get this work done.
If I could, if I could add to that, uh if you'll allow me to, as. Mr. Colleyce mentioned, there's still a number of COs that will remain outstanding. In fact, five lots remain under full covenant still. Two others are released for building but can't get their COs, so there's. Five lots full covenant, seven total COs still in hand.
Okay, alright, I think we recognize the long and tortured nature of the project. This, does everyone understand what the motion is administratively that it's?
I have a question, what, did did we on purpose, did we do that on purpose?
Think so, I think we just didn't think of it.
We didn't think it was two.
We didn't, we didn't think of it as a two-step.
Yeah.
We just didn't think.
I didn't ask, so I I'll take some of that responsibility.
We we never, we never said, let's grant the CEO, CEO.
It wasn't until the attorneys contacted me and said.
They were probably trying to clear title and they couldn't, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Unless we were trying to create some affordable housing.
No, we're not going that route, so. If anyone is going to make a decision.
I will make the most, I moved that we release the Form D covenant to allow sale of three homes on Thrushwood Lane. Previously released for certificate of occupancy.
Do you need them to authorize me to sign that?
To sign.
Yeah, uh well, uh then I'll amend that to say authorize the chairman, chair to release, to sign and release the Form D covenants, et cetera.
Okay, thanks Malcolm. We've got a motion by Malcolm and a second by Jeremy. Do we have any discussion? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Are you abstaining? No, you are, I, okay, so unanimous, okay, great, thank you, thanks Jim.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. That was Jeremy. Yep, you're welcome. Alright, uh next item on our agenda is um special permit for nine twenty Main Street review and recommendation to the select board. On the special permit application from Michelle, is it Maggie?
Maggie.
Maggie, Michelle Maggie, nine twenty Main Street, Great Barrington for marijuana cultivation and manufacturing establishment. In an industrial zone at nine twenty Main Street, Great Barrington. Application for section three point one point four thirteen, C thirteen, seven eighteen and ten four. Alright, so do you want to just introduce yourself for the record?
Yeah, uh so I'm Michelle, this is my husband and partner. Um and I would like to introduce our property as well. I know you guys are just there, but um this kind of gives you.
Oh, that's helpful.
Why this whole side is all soarland.
Does that, Jeremy, that was a question you had, it's like. Right, right.
And the train tracks are right here, Main Street.
Okay, great, no, thank you, that's helpful.
I'll put it on screen so the folks can.
Alright. So Chris, this is a multi-step process, right? So this is a special permit application and then this board would see this application again under site plan, right?
Yes, all marijuana establishments pursuant to zoning by law also require site plan approval. Typically, you deserve that until all the details through the special permit are finalized. At that point, if the special permit is ultimately approved, uh the site plan approval becomes just a formal step. To finalize the last thing, so. At this point, it's just a recommendation on the special permit application.
So since this is a public meeting and we we conducted a site visit and you explained where you're gonna have different. Where you're gonna have different aspects of of your operation, could you, for purposes of the public meeting, just describe that again here for us?
Sure, um so um this property is our farm and we live here. And in the front part closer to Main Street is like where our house lives and some of the other farm structures. Um but the rest of the property is all meadows and wetlands. Um it is actually an active farm now agriculturally, so we're gonna just use existing land that was. That's already cleared for agricultural use, already cleared of any wetlands, um to fence in about a half acre. So a half acre of our seventeen acres where we'll cultivate cannabis inside high tunnels.
Okay.
Uh we have one high tunnel now. Um the goal is that we will have a second high tunnel in the future. Uh we wanted to get clearance for the full scale plan, so we don't have to come back when we want for the second high tunnel.
And for purposes of just the the record here, um the approximate dimensions on those high tunnels, so you're gonna?
They're thirty feet wide by ninety-six feet long.
Okay.
Yeah, one now we'll get a set.
And the one we looked at was at thirty by ninety-six? And um as far as the um cultivation process. What's, how many like crops are you planning to get um on a year basis?
Oh, well, right now, what we expect is that we can grow seventy-two plants per high tunnel. And just in rows in the ground.
Okay.
So and so one year, we're growing outdoors, we're not gonna go into the winters.
Okay, so you're not heating the, um we've had another application that they were gonna do multiple.
That requires so much energy consumption after we really understood how much it was, we didn't know it'd be ethical.
Okay.
It's a tropical climate, it's just.
And so all the, all of the marijuana will be grown uh in, in the in the high tunnels.
Um that's also because of threats of mold, um you know, especially if it's a season like how it's been so much rain. The the plant is, you know, likely the mold is where we're trying to grow it outside.
Did you have your community? How did that go? It was overall very friendly, I would say. There were.
Questions that were agreed after our presentation. I talked, I talked to people who left me.
Yeah.
Everybody said it went, they were, okay, well, you're really happy.
Oh, okay, great, no, no, thank you, I didn't get a chance to go to that.
Yeah, the questions were just about, like, there was, I think there was a bit of a misunderstanding because they asked about retail and we're not doing retail, it's just cultivation. They asked, are we gonna grow in high tunnels? Yes, um they they wanted to know, like, that's from the land, like, what was around us, our neighbors. So like the new housing that just went up is right up next to our house, right over here.
Yeah.
So that's what they wanted to know. And then they wanted to know that they they could be accessed and we have a driveway. The, there's a question about my growing experience and I did have um part-time commercial growing experience as well as home indoor growing experience. Um and then there's a question about the smell. And we, that was part of our presentation, what we broke down, but because we're just growing outdoors and within high tunnels. And because of the remote location of our site with so much windbreak, that'd be very difficult. But of course, because of the small scale as well, it'd be very difficult to smell um anything at any point in time. The only time where it could be a risk of the smell is like three weeks during September and October because again, we're all going.
Peat flower, that only happens once a year.
Yeah.
Has anybody been down by Nova Farm when it's all?
Sorry, where?
Nova Farm, down on Kellam Road in Sheffield. They have an outdoor grow facility and. You can smell it in the, it's bigger though, I'm sure.
Was there anyone from, any residents from Windrush Commons that came to the meeting?
No, but I'm not sure how full it is. They just had their opening on June thirty.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if anyone was there yet, but.
It's not fully occupied, for sure.
Okay, but there was, there were. Brookside Manor is across the street.
Check the attendance list.
I know Nan was there.
They, no, like, we didn't collect addresses?
But there was definitely one person there that may have been too. As far as I understood, yeah.
And I can't remember, are you required to notice the abutters about your public meeting? Was there any commentary from the abutter to the south, the development center?
PDC South?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And in terms of like employees, are you gonna have employees coming and going?
Not at first, it'll just be me, we have to have a growth season and make money before I can afford to pay anyone.
Okay.
After that, I do want to have up to five people and we already have parking for that because you all were able to park.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And are you gonna have lights in the grow house or in the high tunnel?
It's so that is, we're, they're not gonna be full of lights, like, we're not doing, we don't have the power.
But we need like a couple lights to keep our mother plants alive.
So there will, there will be like potentially tents inside the high tunnels that have small grow lights and then to keep them other plants alive. Light cycle.
Yeah.
But that would, again, all of our electricity usage should be covered by the by the solar.
The solar, right this morning.
Okay.
Were any of that light escape?
It would be, no, it would be a blackout.
Yeah, if it escaped, it would run retire artists.
Yeah.
Like the same kind of, I don't know if you're familiar all with indoor grow, we're just like. Inside of the high tunnel, so that we have clones to use because that's the safe this way to grow.
Does anyone have other questions, go ahead Malcolm?
That's a manufacturing, uh can you describe what the manufacturing would be and where it would be?
Yeah, uh yes, I don't think that was in the permanent application, but we have a photo of the machine there.
It's very small, but it's like, it's like a crock pot basically, um with like a vacuum pump on it and. It's just an ethanol tincture, so it's. Is all of that recapture ethanol tincture.
We have multiple conversations, so can we just take one of it? So I'll let you guys decide who you want to talk to, but that's just.
Describing the apparatus that we're going to be using, we're going to be manufacturing tincture, uh what's the?
The name of the the product we're using is called Etoh Pro. E T O H Pro is named by a company called Extract Craft, they have tons of content online, if you want to look into it further. But as you're saying.
Yeah, it's basically a vacuum pump attached to a crock pot. And you wash the frozen cannabis in ethanol. And then you put it in the pot and then it vaporizes the, and recaptures the ethanol, so you can use it again for the next run. And you're left with just extract that you can dilute into like coconut oil or glycerin or whatever to make tinctures. And that will be our uh wholesale product.
That's your wholesale product, not flower.
We may do flower as well, it's, but that's dependent on whether any given harvest can pass past these rigorous. Like, uh you know, microbial pests, that's tough for outdoor.
And you guys are having a separate line of conversation.
The machine. Oh, okay, I was just saying, it's it's been on the table, I mean, I took a picture of a person, you just need to see the size.
Gotcha. So in terms of where that extraction will occur, is that going to be in the high tunnels or is that in a third structure?
We're going to get, yeah, so like, we're we'll go with like a small, uh essentially like one of those mobile shed things. Just to have a table in there, we'll we'll put the, so yeah, there will be a.
That should, yeah, but my plan is to just get a shed that does not require permitting because it's less than twelve by ten foot of fire.
Okay, alright. Okay.
You're inside the fenced in area, everything. Everything is gonna happen inside the fenced in area.
So how much of that area is actually being fenced?
It's about a half acre, yeah.
Just a half acre.
Correct, the, yeah, the 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 stretch that was mowed is sort of the fence line.
Yeah, so it's three hundred twenty feet long by eighty feet wide, almost a half acre. What happened in the other building is very long, why? The chickens are there.
Chickens are.
We live there, the cabin is like a workshop, um it's empty right now, it has electricity. Eventually, we'd like.
Probably a wood, wood workshop or a pre-season cabin.
Yeah, so we're friends to stay, we have dogs and we have a cat that doesn't want dogs, so it'd be cool, we, so we, it's empty. And then barn is where we homeschool our daughter and she have a place based where her friends come over.
And then there's.
And there's a tractor for maintenance on the other side of the barn.
Can you explain these diagrams that were in your, these two diagrams, this one and this one?
Yeah, they might be updated when I submit, but basically what I was trying to do. And I don't want the security to be public because, you know, security. But uh the the idea is that I didn't know if we would really need to fence in the whole space because it's just me. Like, I I don't have the capacity to manage more than one high tunnel. And we don't need more than that for, you know, we don't need that much space. But I didn't want to um. I didn't want to have to come back when I wanted to extend the fencing.
You want to be approved for your full build out?
Yes.
Yes, that makes, that's what you're gonna do in two phases.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
In that second diagram, it shows that you're gonna be growing outside of the.
That is no longer the case, so originally we were gonna try to test.
This labeled outdoor test thing, we've already had enough sufficient test data from the weather this season to know that it's.
We're not, we're not gonna pursue that, and we're, you know, we're happy to.
Yeah.
Put that into the, you know, terms of, whatever word, like. It'll just be, it's just just gonna be a high tunnels.
I mean, I think it might be, it might be good if you just updated that.
Yeah.
Do we have to resubmit the?
No, you could submit some supplement that clarifies and make sure that. It's received in plenty of time for the stuff, for the public hearing.
Board members, um anybody else, Pedro? Jeremy?
Um well, my, my sole concern is the, is the smell. And the fact that there's prevailing estuaries, that all of that smell.
It's actually great because all of our abutters are east of us.
Yeah.
No, it's coming out of the west.
So it's into the east?
And and. You know, it's hard to find another place in town that has the high density that that those three lots have. Between the Windrush Commons and the senior housing and and. And so there are a lot of people that are potentially infected.
For, for twenty days out of the year.
After what today.
Before the day.
Yeah. I mean, that, that would be the concern.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I mean, I. Tried to like proactively go and smell the field grown sites, like. At Nova Farm and over at the Dawson property and in New York where they're doing a couple of different facilities and. I haven't found it to be like overwhelming, you know, I think if you're sensitive, you may notice it, but I haven't.
I mean, I think it's like only when you visit us today, right? There's.
It's not September though.
Yeah. No, I, no, but.
But, no, I, I think that's.
Only day, the twenty days of wear fashion.
And that's been my experience, that it's, it's a fall occurrence and it's a limited couple of weeks, so. Um, so I, I understand what you're saying, I, I don't know that it's gonna rise to new standard.
In any case, in any case, they can cultivate thereby right.
Yeah, we could cultivate.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, he's correct. That's when we were trying to look and figure out what business model can work. Um, one of the perks of this is you don't have to grow as much and we have to grow ham. If, we, we like, it's like, we like the wildflower meadows, we like, you know, with our bees, so.
And so this is only like a hundred and forty-four, is it?
Yeah, forty-four plants.
And what, what do you?
Oh, much bigger, yeah, no, no, it's acres and acres, yeah. Uh.
It's, the total square footage is like five thousand.
It's the, yeah, at, at full scale, so technically tier two, the vinyl is two.
Okay.
Because we go seven hundred square feet over.
I mean, Jonathan, do you think there's, are you raising this as an issue or do you think there's some means of mitigating it? Because we have talked with other, um, applicants.
If they grow in, in those hoop houses, I don't think.
But in fact, it's interrupt, I mean, I think that's something with your site plan, because again, they can grow by right.
Why do they need a special permit then?
Manufacturing.
Well, we, we could, we could.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, could, could I just, I don't want that statement to go.
Yeah.
Going to challenge? Um, no, I, I, I believe that all cultivation of marijuana is regulated by the CCC. All cultivation is by specific term. Um.
You were talking about hemp plant.
But, the, the point was also made, I don't know if anybody caught it, it could be agricultural use, farm grown hemp, not subject to CCC regulation. That could occur by right, right?
And that is also smelling.
And that's also smelling.
It's the same, it's, it's the same plant, it's the same. Same plant, different regulatory scheme, yeah. Uh, so anyway, this, this particular proposal does require a special permit, but you're right, Andrew. Hemp not subject to CCC regulations.
Would be by right. Can you explain why it's any marijuana establishment in the I-zone? Is allowed, I mean, there's a why there.
This SB cultivations.
Oh, oh, I see, I looked at the wrong place.
My, my, okay.
My mistake.
So, so the distinction here is hemp versus marijuana CCC regulation or not, okay.
You wouldn't really grow a hundred and forty-four hemp plants.
I don't know that it's worth having, like, any of that deliberation on this part of this.
It would have to be.
Um, so, does anyone have any further question about manufacturing? Jackie, I'm sorry.
No, I don't.
No. Anything else for you, Jonathan? No? Alright, um, I think, uh, in terms of what we've heard, um, I, my opinion is we would send a positive recommendation on special permit to the select board.
Oh, yes.
Okay, does anyone want to make that motion?
Well, I'm so moved.
Thank you, Malcolm, move a second on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeremy, any further discussion? All in favor? Any votes?
Let's get my board figured out.
Well, I'd like to do that. Thank you, Bill, I will see you. Appreciate the timing, gave us a sit site today, thank you for mowing.
Yeah, but you do well by the rain.
We got lucky, yeah, we went out there while it was raining to sort of see if it was a problem.
As long as we were not offended.
Alright, next item on our agenda is site plans for two oh seven North Plain Road, discussion vote on the application. From Peter Stanton for installation of an accessory used ground mount solar energy system greater than seven hundred and fifty square feet. Filed per section nine twelve and ten five of the zoning bylaw. Um, and we had a note here that we were gonna make a site visit, we ended up not making that site visit. So, hi Peter, how are you? I think you're muted on your end, so you're.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So, this is, um, this is really a revisiting of the very first one that I, the first proposal that I had shown you, it was, um. We had moved it to the back, we were, we just, uh, in the last few months, uh, finally got, uh, some kind of sign off from National Grid. And they really decreased the size that we can have, and so we're putting a much smaller setup. Back in the original site in the, basically the sheet pasture.
Okay, great, um, Chris, is there a plan you can just share on screen? Just, this is, this is still in the front pasture up parallel to the road, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I'll put the plan on screen, um, since the carport is gone.
The carport is gone, yep, unfortunately.
I separately asked the applicant how big, uh, in square footage terms, the trip line or the project area of the solar was, and I believe Peter, he said one thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet.
Yep. Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, let's see, so, we're gonna see this on screen. And so this is.
Application isn't very helpful.
Oh, so we're running par, parallel to the driveway, not perpendicular anymore.
It's where the carport was.
Yeah.
So, Peter, your plan's on screen, if you want to talk to it, I can use the cursor to try to follow what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean. There's, um, the, we're National Grid, so we still have a waiting period, uh, because National, we have to wait for National Grid to change the pole on. The track side and then, uh, install a pole on our side of the street. Um, after that, um, you know, we're just, uh, putting these up. Um, and it's a thirty-four kilowatt system, thirty, thirty-four and a half or so. And, um, it's in, in front of the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can still do whatever pushes and things along the road that make any sense. We are gonna have to start our charging stations, um, uh, kind of near the beginning of the parking area. That will be connected to the system.
Okay, great, um.
Are, are those panels facing due south or it looks like they're southeast?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a slight angle on, uh, it's. I don't know what they're gonna do in terms of individual panels, but you're right, they're, they're kind of straight, um, it, it's a little bit. A little bit southeast and I think that it's gonna wanna be a little bit tilted, um, more due south. Which is not parallel, not with the road. Are they what?
Are they fixed or are they on a tracker?
They're fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, that would definitely be here, Spanish, to, to crank that around to, to south.
Yep.
Just for your information, I have a seven KW solar array that is perfectly facing south. And it actually produces nine kilowatts per year.
Great. Good to hear.
Right, um, so in terms of meeting, um, the various requirements. Um, dimensionally, it needs to step back requirements?
Yeah, we're, we're so far away from the back lines or the sidelines that, um.
Yeah.
That they don't matter, so we're just gonna keep that fifty feet back from the frontline, or is it seventy-five feet? I can't remember. Uh, whatever it is, we're staying back from frontline, everything else is, is far away.
And the height, um, still doesn't exceed fifteen feet?
Correct.
Um, and this, is this gonna be outside the agricultural area or is it inside the pasture? I can't remember.
It's gonna be just inside the pasture.
Okay. So the, the sheep or the goats will be grazing under it, is that what's anticipated?
That's the ideal image, but we'll see.
And here's for less trouble than goats.
Exactly, I'm worried about the goats and we're gonna have to put some extra fencing around so they don't try and get up on the lower ones, on the lower.
Alright, so that's good, so just in terms of visual impact, there's a land clearing that needs to happen and it's proposed on agricultural land being co-located with sheep. Um, we all understand where the utility lines are coming in, right, everybody? And it's inside the existing fence. So in terms of other issues, i- if anyone, I'm not personally concerned about the visual, I think. The solar and the farm are kind of a nice pairing together. And you're only seeing the edge of it, yeah, it's step back almost a hundred feet, so I, I don't know that, I don't think they need any visual screening.
I don't think so. I like the average of it.
Yeah, me too, that's great, um, okay, alright. Does anyone have any questions for Peter?
I'd say one.
Go ahead.
Peter, I'm wondering if you can share why National Grid reduced the size of the, of the, of the project?
Um, I, I wish I knew, um, it's very frustrating, this has been a three-year process, um, and we're only getting some sign off, as I said, in the last couple of months. And they were, they, maybe there was a hint that for their station, that's the one up in the Houstonic area. They could only, and they were only allowing people to have something like twenty-five kilowatts, um, per lot. And, and just, you know, in the, in the ends, they just basically said, if you want approval, this is it. This is what you get. Um, which is, yes, been very frustrating.
I'm gonna mention.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Chris, did this have to go to the egg mission or it's too small to trigger that requirement?
Um.
It says it's commercial scale, it's not.
Yeah, this is not commercial scale. I thought we had a threshold.
I didn't see a, a KW threshold on it, that's why I was asking the question.
Uh, yeah, agricultural permission is just for commercial scale sites, this is what we call accessory, it's dedicated. Uh, to serve onsite use. It's, it's not necessarily to sell out, we're gonna be.
Great, thank you.
So accessory systems, no, there's none.
And before we start site plan review, does anyone else have any questions about?
So, how many KW were we done?
He said thirty-four point five. And seventeen hundred and ninety square feet in area. Okay, alright, well, if there's no more questions, we'll run through the, um, ten point five site plan review as soon as I can pull it up, alright? Alright, so, in her, um, ten point five five, first, we will the site plan. Uh, we go through, uh, items that you normally review, so minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, six inch caliber or larger. The length of removed stone wall, the area of wetland vegetation displaced and the extent of storm water flow increase from the site. Solar erosion or threat to air water pollution, agree, it doesn't apply. Um, maximizing accessibility, I don't think that applies here either. Um, minimizing obstruction to scenic views from publicly accessible locations, it will be visible from North Plain Road, um, but.
It's not obstructing anything either.
Well, I don't know, some people would make it a thing, so, same here. Um, okay, so no concern there. Number four, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking storage or other outdoor service areas from public ways from this or premises residentially used or zoned. Uh, so I don't, I don't think that applies, minimizing blur from headlights or light spillage or overspill in properties, that's not applicable. Uh, minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. I think it's consistent with the farm operation. Uh, minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite waste or disposal systems, which doesn't apply, or handling, uh, storage of contain, containment of hazardous substances. I don't think that applies either. Um, and then ensure compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw and putting parking. Um, so in that context, um, does anyone have any other questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve site plan for this application. Thank you, Malcolm, move a second. And Jonathan, do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any votes? Okay, unanimous, thank you, Peter, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have an estimated timeframe at all or are you just like in progress to now?
Um, yeah, I think it's, uh, I think the, the National Grid said something about June, July, so I'm hoping we'll hear something from them soon. Uh, but, but there's no data, poll should be in by such and such.
Okay, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, thank you, have a good evening.
Bye.
Alright, I am number seven, site plan review, um, for forty Lake Mansfield Road, discussion and vote on the application from the town of Great Barrington. Care of the planning department for site plan approval to the expansion of the parking lot at Lake Mansfield Recreation Area, we did hold a site visit on this, uh, earlier today. Mr. Rumble, you wanna take it away?
Sure, thank you, uh, this application is in front of you, uh, per section ten point five of the zoning bylaw. Uh, parking lots and clearing of certain sizes require site plan approval and found is subject to its own zoning bylaws, so. We are here seeking that site plan approval for the Lake Mansfield parking lot. Which is a component of the much larger Lake Mansfield recreational area improvements. Which are scheduled, we hope, to begin construction later this calendar year. Uh, with me tonight on Zoom is Megan McDevitt, she's our project engineer with the engineering firm Word and Current. And can answer, uh, any of the technical questions that you may have on this proposal, um. In brief, as I explained at the site visit, I think which was really helpful tonight, following the rainstorm, so you could all see. The stormwater issues at, at the site, but the, the key issues with the existing parking lot. At Lake Mansfield's, parking lot is too small to serve, uh, the recreational area, particularly as the area is getting more and more popular. Uh, the parking lot is not handicap accessible in any way, there's no accessible path to the trails or to beach area or to the parking area. And we are obliged to provide handicap accessibility, um, and it has obviously terrible stormwater controls. And over many years, it's been studied and demonstrated in various, um, reports. That the stormwater runoff around Lake Mansfield is the primary pollutant of the lake, delivering sediments. Um, you know, in, into the lake, nutrients, uh, into the lake, which is causing weed growth and, you know, infilling. Causing warmer water, particularly in the shallow areas where sediment is spilling in, where we have little deltas of sediment. So over the years, the town, uh, through the leadership of the Lake Mansfield Task Force, and, and after many different grants that we've received. Have been able to make a lot of improvements throughout the Lake Mansfield watershed, including on Nob Hill Road, Castle Hill Avenue, or at the boat launch. The last two hotspot areas for storm, uncontrolled stormwater pollution into the lake are the road itself. And the park, parking lot is a big one. I don't have the numbers offhand, but the watershed based plan we did just before COVID, to, to, um, described some of the. Uh, runoff volumes that came off parking lot and, um, we did get a grant through Mast EP for the design of this new parking lot. So the parking lot is designed to meet the standards of DDP in order to help, uh, over the long term, improve the water quality of the lake. This particular plan, um. Will build a larger parking lot than exists now for several reasons. Number one, as I said, it's too small, parking lot is too small right now. Number two, the parking lot will get larger to include more stormwater features, rain gardens and swales and these types of sorts of things, more. Number two, the parking lot will get larger to include more stormwater features, rain gardens and swales and these sorts of things, more plantings. Uh, it will have better accessibility because we'll be able to make the parking lot flatter essentially by pushing it a little bit northward into the tree line that is there now. And at the south end of the parking lot, where a lot of you were parked tonight for the site visit, that area actually will not be parking lot anymore, it will be more incorporated into the circulation of the site. Because when the project is completed, the road between the boat launch and the parking lot along the edge of the lake will no longer be a vehicular road, a through road for vehicles, emergency vehicles to be able to pass. But, um, so that, so that through vehicle access through the parking lot like it is now will no longer be needed. They can go around the parking lot, so for all these reasons, the parking lot is getting larger and being relocated slightly. Let's see. Uh, the the new lot, uh, will be paved that allows to maintain it in winter and it is a four-season space, so that's important. It also allows us to better direct stormwater into rain gardens rather than having it runoff and dirt, so that's. And let's see, there there actually are ten of the spaces, ten of the forty spaces will be permanently pavement, we don't need those ten while you're alone. So, fine, that is good. I think those are the high. Can I answer any detailed questions? Megan, I don't know if there's anything you have to add.
Hi Megan, thanks for joining us.
Hi all.
Um, so just in terms of our normal site plan review process, Chris, so because the parking area is gonna extend northward, do we know how many square feet of that wooded area and the quality of that wooded area in terms of what will be impacted for the for the additional or the reconfigured parking?
The the wooded area beyond the that is more than the existing parking lot, uh, it will be cleared, it's about twenty thousand square feet.
About a half an acre, okay.
It's, it consists almost entirely of bittersweet pines and old gradual white pine trees or shrubs, invasive shrubs. It's not what I recall in any way, shape or form, good habitat for anything but other invasive species like poison ivy, so
And the.
we do acknowledge that there is a good bit of clearing required in order to make the parking lot larger and to put it in a more in in a flatter and more accessible location and to include the provision for vehicle circulation. So there is some some tree clearing, but I think overall, the ecological benefits gained by a parking lot with better stormwater controls and all of the uh, new landscaping that will go in at the parking lot and along the road itself. I think that definitely outweighs the clearing of white pines and bittersweet.
Yeah, and and it was something that the task force looked at, is that, you know, what is the value of that wooded area and the Lake Mansfield Alliance gave us some feedback on the uh, quantity of invasives and really undesirable and weak trees, so it seemed like i- in terms of best place to put it, it seemed like one of the better places for it to go. I think the accessibility piece is really important, and I don't know if Megan wants to describe how accessibility is being improved and how there'll be um, access to to all the different features and the parks serves a lot of different functions to trail access and beach access and playground access, so um, that might be helpful if the board has any questions about that, wants to see it up. Um, and then I think the landscaping has been really thought through as well, so it might be helpful to hear a little bit more about the the landscaping that's being proposed.
Megan, I'd be happy if you could address those.
Yeah, um, so the land, the accessibility is definitely something we've worked on improving here, I believe, you know, the one thing we've done is is come up with a parking lot design that meets standards as far as grades and slopes and things like that. We have identified a couple of accessible parking spaces that have, you know, the proper van accessible aisles between them. And then we've also graded the site so that we have an accessible route from those parking spaces around the stormwater features. Identified dedicated crosswalks across the access road, Lake Mansfield coming in from the north. And then that brings you to an accessible route all through the park area and down to the beach, where we'll even have accessibility mats that will get people down to the water and stuff like that. Those accessible routes through the park area will bring you all the way to changing stations, portable toilets and all down to the playground equipment that was recently installed, so that all that will have an accessible route from the parking area. I will note, um, it may look a little counterintuitive seeing the parking spots like on the far end, they're kind of on the north end of the parking spot, you'd think they would be closer to the beach. But because we are cutting this parking lot into the side of a hill, we can't meet our slopes and provide those ADA accessible route by putting those parking spots closer. So by putting those parking spots a little bit on the the north side or farther away from the beach, it allows us to make a very gradual accessible route, no need to add any ramps or handrails or things like that, so it'll feel more natural and match the park there.
One of the goals of the task force and what we heard over the years of doing this planning was to to that any improvements would look as natural as possible without too many interventions like handrails or too many steps and things like that. So the accessible parking spaces are being located closest to the accessible path, which is sounds strange, but it's on the far end of the parking.
Was consideration given to where you have a drop off area, you did put two handicap spaces there?
It it was, the task force did look at that and wanted to maintain them purely as temporary spaces, but they are accessible. Um, but the idea is that to take cars out of that space and put them up in the parking lot to maintain safety and aesthetics in that area, it could be used as as parking.
And is there, is there a way? I don't know, I don't know what the grades are between the drop off area and the playground, is there a way to cut across there that would be acceptable?
We.
There is not, the the drop off area from the road into the playground is actually relatively steep, once you go past what's an existing split rail fence, it dives into the area pretty quickly, yeah.
And it talks about an A D A logging rail, but looks like it's got steps on it?
Think that the crosswalk pad.
No, no, at the at the south end.
Which dig in are you looking at, you know, because there's actually some different. The the conceptual plan that I gave you at the site, there are not necessarily the final engineering plans that were in your pack there. I'm sorry, there's.
Yeah, the the ones in the package.
Megan, maybe, I don't know if you're able to, you're actually probably.
Uh, would you like me to share, would that be helpful?
Be very helpful, thank you, Megan.
Yeah, let me make sure I can. Let's see. If I put these up, does this work?
I, yeah, we don't see him yet.
Oh, positive, I hit the wrong button, how's that?
It's loading.
I would go into like, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so this is, I wanted to show this one because it's it's the layout, but it also has some of the grading on it, so we can kind of talk about why things are hard to navigate. Um, so the area that we are clearing to create this parking spot and kind of create the loop road and stuff is kind of going up a hill. Um, so we have to flatten it out to the best we can, uh, trying to minimize our impacts but also meet our grading. Um, so over here is where we're showing the two accessible uh, parking spots. Then this walkway here is all at grade with no obstructions or anything. And then by running these walkways kind of across or or parallel to the slope, we're able to keep those relatively level and keep them within ADA compliance. Um, we do have parking spots over here, but this over here gets a little steeper. We not steep enough that we need stairs, but steeper that it wouldn't meet ADA standards, um, which is eight percent or one inch per foot rise. So going in this direction, all of this will be accessible, over here is gonna be where our changing stations and portable toilets are. Going this way here would bring you down to what is uh, down here is the playground as well as getting over here to the beach. And then here, what we did is we added stairs just so that we had a connection for those who didn't need to use the accessible route, so they didn't have to walk all the way around and and things like that.
The, I could add to that, Megan. Uh, I believe the roadway at the southern end here, just past the changing station areas is also part of the accessible group.
Exactly, we wanted to create an accessibility because uh, from this trail here, from the the trail in the woods, this also can be accessible there. So we did have potentially some ADA accessible parking spaces here, if needed, we could do that, so they could be accessible to the park and then they could come down um, this way on that route. We just thought if we put them, dedicated them here, it wouldn't be part of the kind of the local road uh, that is gonna be accessible by a couple private properties.
And is the road also, uh, what's the grade on that road between the parking lot and the path not to the changing station, but to the beach, below the path?
Yes, that is right here, so you can see it's four percent, which is below uh, the max of the accessible needs or accessible standards.
The acceptable route goes all all the way to the kind of north end or all the way to the south end. Uses the road for a portion, but in between there, that little path where there are stairs uh, in the in the recreation area.
Correct.
Where where there are stairs, those stairs are needed there to make up the grade change. But other than that, there are accessible routes to all parts of the area.
So if you were mobility limited and you were gonna go from the beach up to the changing areas, you'd take the lower path, go right to the road and then up around.
Yeah, and calling it a road is.
Or the.
Maybe.
The private drive.
It's it's really a multi-use recreation path because the only vehicles of any regularity here will be those excess areas, you look then they home. It's not a through road.
No bikes?
Bicycles, yes.
Thank you, Megan, that's helpful, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I I think it's a terrible place, I know, I really think that we need a more creative solution because you know, for someone who's handicap, that's a really long walk to get to the beach.
We we looked at so many alternatives and and the other alternatives were so man-intensive in terms of ramp systems and rails, we had switchbacks and and so we've we've been through a lot of alternatives, Jonathan, and this is a tricky thought because it's not really a built environment, right, it's a natural environment, and we're trying to really complement the natural environment and natural environment and, you know, this is a solution that allows us to do that while meeting ADA, whereas there are other accessibility standards that say like the National Park Service uses that um, provide for even steeper runs, but but this solution lets us meet ADA, which I think is is better in terms of providing more accessibility.
I I think Megan did mention it is possible, correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, that the spaces closest to the trailhead are accessible, is that?
Correct, because these could use, we could mark these also as an additional um, uh, accessible space, and then these could use that kind of recreational trail to come down and be accessible that way, and they would also be accessible to the trail there at that point too, so.
That would make more sense.
So would that be three spaces for two, is that what it is?
Right, we would, we need a minimum of two of these spaces. You know, we could do two of these and make one of these accessible and keep one here, or we could flip and get rid of these ones here and relocate them up there, and it would be three for two, but you would gain some back here if you're relocating them.
Hey Jonathan, the other thing we talked about in terms of the drop off area was that, you know, when you go to the beach, it's not just you, right, it's you and all your gear, and so part of the reason we wanted to leave the drop off area was so that you could, you and your gear could get off there. And and then you can take a slightly shorter route, but I I actually don't remember when I had forgotten that we had talked about the trail spaces being accessible, I don't remember why we took those away.
But, they they can be, it's.
I I think we will still want diverse because there's multiple centers of use on the property, there's the playground, which is more to the west, and there's the beach, and there's the trail, so like those were the three areas we were trying to balance. I like the idea of having one and one.
The trails themselves are accessible in the forest, and so as I mentioned, site is one of the many goals of this space was to make all aspects of the recreational area accessible, including the kids. Which is why those spaces can be. Keep the two and the additional handicap spot.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that idea of having the two spots. The two different locations.
So it's the two, the minimum for the number of spaces? Is that the number?
Um, I think it was the minimum, but I'd have to double check, to be honest with you, it's been a while since I've done that calc.
Code requires one for twenty-five.
Right, and we have forty spaces, I believe, total, so.
And so if we had three, then.
Well, we have a lot of old people.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think, I think two is like feels a bit, I mean, just sitting in the butter net parking lot, a number of people that come through with a with the placards.
There we go.
Yeah.
Well, I I mean, you know, I know that's, you're you're just joking, but.
That's the characteristic of our.
This is much more accessible. I mean, the the current site is not accessible in any way, sugar.
Yeah, but now we're putting a lot of money into it.
That's right, that's right, so this will be accessible and and we can add another space.
So let's add the the additional handicap space, if that makes sense, so.
I wanna make sure I just understand, we're we're keeping two here and we're adding just one up here? We're add two here.
One at the playground space, yeah, because it does reduce, so one at the playground space and two at the trail.
Yeah, because if you go to the beach, that's a better location.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, that's not not a problem.
Okay, I think, but the only other thing is, Megan, would you just run through the landscaping, I know that what, well, it, does anyone wanna hear the details of the stormwater management?
I.
They're on the hunch of their seat. It's really important.
I like that.
It's really important.
If you were part of it, it's good.
It's the most important.
It's beautiful, it's dense, and I, I'm really glad to see it.
I actually, I would like to see it. The landscaping or the report?
Oh, I was looking at all the layers and the drawings.
Well, the drawings are beautiful. That's a good hearing report.
So, yeah, so how about the landscaping, is anybody interested in in that?
Yes.
Megan, would you mind just giving us an overview of the landscape plan?
Yeah, you're gonna have to bear with me one minute, I didn't open the set with the landscaping plans in them, so.
So I think one of the really cool accessibility features that's gonna be added though are the mats to get people who might be in a wheelchair down to the beach, so they can get into the water, which is something that does, I mean, does currently there.
Probably on board. Megan.
Sorry, what was that, Chris?
L four and five.
Yep, just one minute, sorry, when I'm at home, my desktop is quite messy.
Chris can ask you a quick question about the, what we got in our backend, I'm just curious what this red dotted line is here, there's like a whole area.
One of them is a setback from the.
The the conceptual drawing that is in your plan uh, includes a red dash line that shows about where the current tree line is. So it gives you a sense of of where the existing parking area and everything to the left of your screen to the north is is new area, trees, multi-white pine and bittersweet, some maples that will be. But that that was, that was a line to to show you the extent of clearing that is required.
Alright, everybody can do it.
So that's what's cleared now.
Yeah, well, what's. What's cleared now is inside.
The red, yes, right, yes, right, yeah.
So this dramatically shows how. Yeah, so this dramatically shows how it's shifted.
Thing to the north, yeah. All right, so there's a landscape plan.
And I will, in full disclosure, I am not the landscape architect. KZLA is. They're the brilliant landscape architects with this, so I. I can't speak to a lot of the uh plant species, details and things like that, but I can give just, you know, a high overview. Um and kind of tie a couple things in. So this this circle in the middle um is our stormwater treatment system. It's a bioretention system, so water will all drain to it. Um and then the water will filter through a soil media uh filter, which will treat it. Um. The nice thing is nobody's gonna know that's what it is because it's gonna be planted with beautiful plants and um shrubs and things like that on the top. So it'll look like a beautiful uh focal piece in the middle of. The loop road and the parking lot here. So this is all new plantings in here. Um there are a few trees that do need to come down because of grading or just the health of the trees as well out there, but they'll be all new trees uh planted in here. So I think you can kind of see the. The existing trees are noted here and all the circles are new um trees that would be planted within the park area uh to compensate or to make up for the ones that are lost. There'll also be a bunch of plantings being added over by the changing stations and the porta potties to help with some privacy and screening and things like that. Um. And then I would say upland of the parking area, when we cut into the side of the um of the hill and in the wooded area. We don't want all the runoff from that area to come into our parking lot and add more sediment into our um. Our soil uh management system. So we will be cutting kind of a swale here to intercept that and then redirect that flow over to the stream that's on the outlet of the pond. And that will all be uh reseeded uh to kind of match and blend in with the existing um area and kind of the natural feel of the area. And just um because we had mentioned it many times, just wanted to show you, this is one of the reasons why the parking lot is so large in the root load. This is uh something we worked through with the chiefs, which is the turning radius of the fire trucks to make sure that we have. Clear access uh for emergency vehicles, uh should anyone ever need them at the site.
And then in the upper right of the parking area are the um, is that a grass paved system? I can't remember.
Yep, yeah, it's gonna be kind of like a grid paper um that will get filled with grass and things like that and um markers too as well that will delineate the lines. So that will be available uh for the towns used kind of during the summer, spring, fall seasons, but then um they don't need to plow it to help keep and maintain the structure. During the winter and the off seasons, which will reduce the parking and just kind of the overall space in the winter. But those will, because it's a permeable system, they're being treated as well and providing stormwater treatment. And will tie in and discharge to the uh same outlet as the rest of the system.
One of the goals of the landscaping plan, which is carried out throughout the space, including along the lake edge and the and the rest of the road. We picture the road now. Um there's an area on the lake edge, which is more or less the pedestrian walking class. Uh path that's delineated with the upright dollars. Uh if you picture that walking path, all of that will be removed, asphalt taken out, and that will all be planted buffer with native species. The vehicle road, as you know it now, that will be the recreation path. So what is now between eighteen and twenty-two feet wide of road will be.
Both feet.
Will be a twelve foot wide recreation path, which uh accomplishes one of the major goals here, which is to to stabilize. Reestablish that lake edge and provide all of that wetly buffer that's required.
What's a recreation path?
Uh it'll be used for walkers, bikers, it's multi-multi-way, so people can go both ways. Um it's limited uh vehicle uses, is limited only to emergency vehicles. I think access to beach. The house at the north end. Yep, not not as a through road to that house. They can only come from the north. So emergency vehicles and utility. Because there's a water main underneath the road and there's over the utility line, so we still need to get. Like a national big truck up there.
Is it open to skate lanes?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be made so I'm. And plowed in the winter. Um but my point being with the the landscaping is that all of that space will carry a landscaping theme of. Not just native species, but species that are appropriate for a rural. Can you talk about what's being planned? Some of the plantings, uh the tree species include uh red maples, river birches, redwood, red buds, dogwoods, sweet gums. And swamp white oaks. Uh oh, thanks. And wild forest. A lot, a lot of of shrub species throughout uh the area, particularly in the. In the parking lot area. One of the sensitivities that task forces had during the. Uh design and and planning of this space is. To not obstruct sightlines, particularly for parents and kids at the beach and the kids might be at the playground and parents might be at one spot, so. There, it's intentional that there aren't shrubs blocking those sightlines, so in some cases there are taller trees you can see under, in some cases the shrubs are with gated. These in different areas. Um. For that reason, the uh. And then there's various mixes uh for the for the replantings, as Megan said, along that bank edge. Uh I'm sorry, along the hill edge that's being cut and then along the. Lake edge itself, it'll be live stakes of willow and birch and things like that. There are areas of the bank that won't be touched. Uh but portions of it near SoCalville Rock will be um. Will become revegetated with those types of species.
Yeah, of course. About the beach itself, is anything changing the beach or is it the same size or is it being cleaned up or and what's happening with it?
The the sand area will remain as it is now in terms of size.
Well.
There was a lot of discussion during the community meetings about do do. Should the town make it bigger? What are the consequences of making it bigger? You get too many people in a very small space. And then there was a balance of, well, how many parking spaces should we provide? We provide too many, then we could overwhelm the beach. So we think that this. Um. The amount of parking spaces versus the amount of play area versus the amount of sand area versus the amount of. People that a lifeguard, that the two lifeguards can adequately supervise. I think we've. Achieved that balance.
Boat launching is. Launching.
Or at this out there.
I know whether they'll be formal or less.
Well, there are informal areas, but.
They're not being enhanced or in.
Yeah.
Encouraged, exactly.
What about um? Trash and recycling? There are a number of uh trash recycling containers throughout the area now, including at the trailhead and throughout the playground. And those will all be retained. A lot of, I think all of them are bear proof containers and they'll be retained and replaced. Handicap benches, picnic tables will be installed. Regardless, whenever I walk there, there there are huge amounts of trash. It is a constant battle. I think Brandy picks up trash every morning.
And and. Last week, I picked up a half of a cake. No, I'm not kidding. No, well, no, it was on a plastic tray with a lid.
I will, if I have this opportunity, and I do, I will give a shout out to Public Works, it's actually doing a great job almost every day.
There, there are at least three or four days a week.
There's uh, you know, on a peak day, there's. Well, I'm not just talking about this area, I'm talking about the 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 whole stretch. The whole stretch.
I have to tell you, like, great point, and has a good amount of public trash cans around compared to a lot of places. Well, not, maybe not enough, but compared to other places.
Yeah.
Where you can't find.
Yeah. And if there are people such as Brandy and myself that actually pick up trash. It might be handy to have it. Someplace. Closer to the drop off area.
I I can't remember on the plan where the receptacles are, but they're they're sort of. I think generally in the areas where we're seeing them now, like. Close to the changing area because we recognize like. Parents with little children might have diapers in it, so you wanna make having a garbage can easy, right? So that the diaper ends up in the garbage.
They're all, they're all. They're they're not located on the plans, they're all to be removed and reset. In spaces where it makes sense. They. They're just on little cement blocks. They're not permanent installations. They can be put anywhere that is convenient. So I don't think they're located on the plans.
People love to park their cars and unload the trash from their car.
Yeah. Or throw nothing in them.
People just need to be more respectful in space, but in terms of site plan review, does anyone have any other questions about site plan review? Should we run through the items and see if any more questions are are raised?
Uh yes.
So on per ten point five, so minimize lines of cut and fill, remove trees six inch caliber or larger. The length of stone wall, your wetland vegetation replaced. The extent of stormwater flow increased from the site, so the erosion and the threat to air pollution. So. We've gotten a a full um explanation on what is being proposed and and what the. Um impacts and benefits are of the new design. Any questions there? No?
No, just to acknowledge there were a lot of trees being taken.
There are a number of two steps, definitely. Um.
Big improvement.
Yeah.
The. Management of stormwater.
Yeah, definitely. It people, yeah, we're gonna start a public education campaign around that, just to start communicating that to people. Um number two, maximize accessibility and pedestrian and vehicular safety, both onsite and accessing and exiting the site. So this has been a big driver of the design. And um minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Views around the lake. Yeah, this is enhancing views.
Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage or other outdoor service areas uh viewed from public ways or premises residentially used or zoned. Um so again, I think we talked about the the landscape plan, but also the need to balance it with maintaining sightlines so that parents can keep track of children. Um minimizing glare from headlights, minimizing light glare into the night sky, minimizing overspill onto adjacent properties.
There's no street light.
Yeah. There.
The posts.
No, no lighting.
This is a natural.
Yeah. Although there are definitely shenanigans that happen there in the evening based on what you see in the mornings.
They later pick up in. Yeah, there is an opportunity to. Possibly add some better security, but it's not part of the parking lot, it'd be closer to the beach.
Uh minimize unreasonable enclosure from the character materials and scale of buildings. Um there's no. Buildings proposed other than the little temporary changing. Or temporary um restroom facilities and the changing uh shelters.
Are they gonna be porta potties?
There are currently porta potties and they'll be relocated to the um to the south end. They're currently at the north end.
We're trying to use these one. No use this year. He goes this year.
Is it just infeasible to actually to build other facility?
It'd have to be a composting self-contained unit, you can't really put a separate field in them. Then there's no sort.
But Pedro, that is on my list of things to put some after this.
At least the structure. Enclose those things that are still accessible to the trucks. They're coming empty on something.
Well, right now they're fitting in like screens, so there's um like a privacy fence screen on three sides. And then the port-a-lit sit inside that screen and that was added a couple of years ago and that's somewhat of an improvement, if you ask me, so when the. They are much closer, everything's being moved a little bit further originally.
Are they gonna be the big nice porta potties where you go in?
There'll be an accessible one, I believe. Yeah.
Shower facility.
No, there's huge when you go in there, so you can like spin, lock the spin around and.
No. Um okay, hold on, hang on. So. Minimize contamination of groundwater from onsite wastewater disposal systems or operations on premises involving the storage handling or containment of passive substances. I don't think that one's applicable. Um and number eight, ensure compliance uh with provisions of this zoning bylaw, including parking and landscaping. So in terms of um a site plan approval, um we talked about one change to the plan to move. Um two parking spaces to the, what is that, south uh east corner of the parking lot by the trailhead? Um and leave one on the northwest corner by the playground access.
If you, if you did double, I mean, is that too much of a burden on?
I.
The number of spots?
I think it is personally. I don't know, Megan, do you have an opinion there? Because each handicap space. It's it's three regular spaces for two ADA spaces. And and the number of spaces, we don't really have that much more room to expand the number of spaces to make up for the two aisles that'll be.
I mean, it would be, we would be double the minimum at that point. Right, with four, four accessible spaces.
Well, we're talking about three, right?
Three, yeah, do one in the closer to the playground and two closer to the trail, which is.
You could always, you know, watch.
I don't know, I think.
How how it works over time.
We're making, we're kind of making this decision based on this feeling that we think more people. Who need accessibility are gonna be using the beach than taking their grandkids, children to the playground.
A bull.
Well, I I. I I think it's a good suggestion to have parking in those spots. I think we have to leave that to the to the um. Uh people overseeing this uh ongoing to determine whether that that's the right mixture of. The number of spots. That would be my.
Cause you can always change them, right?
Yeah, cause you always, you can always change it.
How would we know that? We need to monitor.
I could be out here.
Every day.
Well, right now there are zero accessible spaces, so adding three is a huge improvement. And it is more than what is required under ADA. So I I I, my personal feeling is we should go to a trail that gives flexibility for trail users to use accessible trail. Or come down to the beach and one at the playground. It kind of like gives you like one, one and one for each of the three nodes of activity there.
What what about charging station?
No charging.
Why?
Cause we're not gonna put a fast charger there and that's the only thing that would make sense for that location.
Is you paying?
There is power, but.
Power underground, there's not accessible power.
Yeah. There's no lights or anything.
Put new aerial treat days into what is just like natural space. And you just see.
Aerial.
Given where we are.
We just, yeah, I mean, but then it's like, you just give the opportunity for this long-term parking.
Yeah.
No.
Kind of want people to turn over in that space.
That's what I'm.
And if you only charge for an hour and someone now charges a vehicle an hour on a. On a, what is it, a level two charger is only like twenty miles.
I learned a new term. Yesterday it's called icing. Icing is when you have a gas powered vehicle and you park it. At a charging station.
That's terrible. Okay, all right.
The name for it's called icing.
All right, so we're gonna, we're going, I'm looking for a motion to approve site plan with the suggested changes to the location and um. Um designation of handicap parking as to the.
And so that doesn't, so Chris, I have a question.
Well.
I was struggling, but no one is.
So I moved Jeremy's side.
Thank you, Malcolm. Thank you, Jeremy. A motion that's not get more discussion?
And so by. Running the site plan like this, it doesn't inhibit them from changing the configuration of the handicap spots after the fact. Right?
Well, I'm not clear what your motion is right now. The motion is to have a site plan review with the condition that the uh handicap uh spaces be changed, have two spaces up on the trailhead. And one down by the um the original. That's fine, and if we need another one down there, we can add it. I mean, they're not bound by.
What I, yeah.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying is they don't have, like, the town doesn't have to come back if they wanna reconfigure.
Um whatever. What, rather than a condition, you make a suggestion? Yeah, so that it doesn't, as Jeremy says, it doesn't. You know, we do need to move spaces, it doesn't tire. Well, I mean, here here's what I'd like to add to the condition, that 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 these be the spaces. And that the uh um uh the town uh be encouraged to reevaluate uh the efficiency of those spaces. And and be allowed to change. And 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 change them as required. Without. Without fire action.
By right.
You know, I'd I'd be remiss to just make the observation that we're basically clearing a plot of land. Where we can basically do what we want with it. This is my life when people building. So making. An extra nine foot width to add a spot to me doesn't make a big deal. With money. With money, I get that, but.
Yeah.
This is a long-term project.
So Megan, can you speak at all to the limitations as we move northward for the parking area? Cause we do get into a resource area.
Get into the two hundred foot river.
Yeah, and and so we are constrained a little bit, Pedro, to moving northward for the parking area.
I think the two hundred foot is marked up.
Is it? Okay.
That's.
No, it's this line. Yeah.
It's a dot dash line.
Right, because the outlet of the pond is a stream, so we have a, you know, a riverfront area off of that. Um so moving forward, the more we creep into that and the more we impact that resource area as well. Um and also just the slopes in the in the grades and things like that, we start to get uh it starts to get a little more complicated trying to make turning angles and things like that for the roadway um and like vehicles like fire trucks and things like that.
This is still a lot more parking, whichever way you chop it up, than is existing.
It's like fifteen more spaces.
Yeah, so.
I mean, everybody, seeing everybody parks nice.
It will it will be stikes though, unlike what's out there now. Yeah.
It could be a lot more spaces.
Now it's a free crawl, and I was doing a study for a while where I was going out with several other task force members at various times and counting the number of cars on busy days and and making notice of how people were parking themselves. And it gets really creative, like three cars deep where someone is sandwiched in the middle or parking parallel and perpendicular so that people can't back out. And I mean, thi- this will organize the parking in a way that will make it more.
And can we not get toward, you know, to thinking about public transportation, like little mini dance and bring your beach stuff with you and, I mean, and stand over here and this is where they're coming with your family, wait to get on that thing and it takes you up and goes by the drop by.
Tremendous amount of people walk too. It's.
Yeah, I mean, but I'm just thinking, we're worrying about the car thing, let's try to think about the other modes of transportation to get to where this is.
And half the people won't be able to find it.
I suspect people will find it, I really do. I really do. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We had a lot of discussions. The motion was for site plan approval with a recommendation that the town provide handicap parking at the two locations.
Want it as a recommendation or a suggestion?
Let's make it a suggestion.
So. Well, we weren't gonna make it a condition.
Right, it's not a good, recommendation, suggestion, same.
I think the recommendation is stronger than a suggestion.
So you want the recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I look it up? I do, sir.
Recommendation that two of the handicaps facing would be near the trail, one would be.
And if they're not, we'll go, we know where Chris works.
At least, at least one, at least one.
And do you want the comment to encourage the town where you're going with it?
Doesn't matter then, it's just my prediction. Let's just drop that comment and we'll just make recommendation that the two will park at trailhead. At least one down by the um. Playground.
You've inserted at least, now you want to outreach to them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we.
Hey, we're mixing up noise, we can get a force.
I'm just looking at the plan and think, well, right here and right there, these are permeable, so.
So, okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Am I? Any votes? Okay, in the interest, hooray. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. All right, have a good night. All right, uh town planners report, uh are you ready to give town planners report?
Yes, the only thing I have uh for you is to let you know the joint meeting with the select board, which we had to cancel um earlier this week because of some agenda um hosting issues. We're looking to do it on Wednesday, the second this coming week. At five here.
Chris, do you have any info on the the town square proposal, parking for the town hall?
I I don't. Uh Pedro's asking about uh proposed changes to the town hall campus. The staff made a number of comments to our engineering firm and we're waiting for those to be resolved before we come back with a presentation to the planning board and to the select board. With that, it will, I think, require a planning or site plan approval similar to to what Lake Mansfield, why why the Lake Mansfield project triggered. I think might not trigger. So not on the agenda just yet, Pedro.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, um board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns?
I can give you an update on that.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So we met last, yesterday at five o'clock at the library and we had full attendance with, everybody was there, Jenny Clark, Kevi Broder, who's new, Steve Deeman returned, I'm there, and Jim Mercer's there, and of course, Tim's there. Actively involved enough. Figure out with with our.
Two rules.
And um we had discussion, we discussed signs, marquees and murals. The difference between them and where, does the DAC have any proof? You know, all of that now is not coming to us. And we're not, the interpretation is that doesn't come to us and also all the sign codes have been moved, I mean, signs. Discussion, they moved town code off of the bylaws, but so that we're not thinking that we're getting signs, but we were wondering that certain things like the mural, I mean, instead of the interpretation of the building manager, no. What's.
Building inspector.
Inspector. It's written right here, right here, it's building inspector, but um so we we talked about that, just for what do we know and what's coming to us and what's not coming to us and acknowledging how complicated it has been. Um then we realized that we do need to redo the DAC's overall brief for the bylaw, there's a lot of it that we have to like the brand new. And the opportunity presented by the retirement of the building inspector by Ed is giving us a chance to really reflect on how we operate and connect with the town more effectively. And it the goal here is to realign the activities, this is my language. Not managed yet, but this realignment of activities with current needs of the town per town senior management, I did not refer to Mark and Chris, but with their input as well as very good. And um so it really is, we're ranging from clearly, who away with the DAC to look at where we are right now as defined in the bylaw and examine it, whether it's effective or not, based on the the knowledge that we all have and the concern that we've heard. Or, I mean, there has been some, well, let's look at the purview of the DAC. Should just be down to down this expansive mode, which is looking at B two. Now we're looking at any other area which we want to bring a certain kind of um review aspect of it, but everybody is committed to the fact that we've done projecting. The fact that it's an advisory committee. And we'd like to be seen as an advisory committee that is seen as an asset or resource to the town and for people coming to try to do something here. Um that something is voluntary, they don't have to do it with us, but it is a resource and then it gets complicated. It's a checkbox on the building inspector, like this and the method of that. So there's a lot of stuff that we don't understand, you don't have, we don't have Pedro and we don't have Jonathan on this committee. So we don't have the the history of the relationship with the planning board and what's been done and we're all looking at each other. And then we just.
She provides continuity.
Yeah, she she does, and she's actually stepping up to the plate as we sometimes learn her a lot. But I've only done it two, two weeks.
Okay, great.
But that's what we're thinking about. Now, anybody wants to say something? I'm looking at faces. I'm missing Pedro and Jonathan or what are you thinking?
Relief.
No, but when you, when you look at the mandate, don't forget to look in the special permit part and site plan.
Oh, we have that.
It's mentioned there.
Sometimes it's mandatory, sometimes it's not.
And remember that it's not just B two, it's B C O D.
But that much, how large? How large is this?
Well, you've got a map. Hopefully that part is on. Traditionally, I mean, that's how we refer to it.
No, I think of it as liquid. That's correct, and it's my own personal perspective in the great area.
Liquor store to liquor store?
Farm to work to Spencer, it's another thing to think about. Okay, but I know that's the area, but it's, I think it was raised by a couple of people on the committee about thinking about whether it should be larger. But that's all up for grabs. I mean, that's what we haven't. We're moving, you know, meet once a month, and we're now the next meeting.
So I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, if you wanna expand or contract it, you'd have to come to this body to do it.
This is everybody, well, yeah. I I'd have to, uh zoning, I mean.
It's in zoning.
If if it's in zoning, you you would have to end up here during the public hearing process at least.
And we're talking, we're talking about whatever it's needed to do to make the appropriate, if we have questions, how can we work with you guys? How can we work with Chris? How can we work with the town with what things? And then mainly, it's also understanding the building inspector and what the building inspector's expected regarding that. What are they going to vote? How much freedom do they have and do they bring in their own interpretation or is it traditional, the interpretation of Ed made? Or are they gonna channel you, Chris, or family, Mark? Or us, the, you know, the planning board.
Yeah, it's good to try to figure that out.
That's what we're trying to do within the first three months of the building inspector.
Thank you very much. Jonathan?
You can take me aside and find me a drink.
She's more fun when she's drinking.
Anyway, do you have a board committee update issue or concern?
No, I don't. I, not that I can remember.
Okay, we spent plenty of time on Lake Mansfield, so I'm good. Jeremy?
Uh CPA, uh next meeting is our public hearing for the CPA and which I just sent around to the board.
Just now?
Just now. Well, what I sent around was last year's plan. Um and uh yeah, so we meet at six o'clock on Monday.
Okay.
The 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 hearing actually won't be on Monday.
Oh, it's not?
I wasn't able to do that part of it.
Okay.
But there will be discussion on Monday, so that gives this board some more.
Yeah, some more time. And so again, what we, what you can add, what what the committee can add to the plan is on um which we don't tend to do, well, well, we can have our, we can add anything that we. Well, well, yeah, I can.
The CPA plan public hearing is is primarily a time for the CP, for the CPC, the committee to hear.
Public.
From everybody, public input about the the needs relative to historic preservation of the space.
And of course, yeah. And so, but from from this board we're looking for is, I guess, if any changes to the plan. I mean, every, each year it gets updated. Um and each year we have discussions about, do we wanna, like, what do we wanna add to the plan? Like maybe our, you know, highlights, like if you bring this kind of thing, we'd be very excited or or be more apt to um whatever. Um but also in the plan, you can, which we haven't done, is you can decide that for that cycle, you're gonna put this percentage to any of the three categories. Um more than the ten percent that's required in the category.
Is is there anyone keeping a running total of like, how?
Yeah.
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 Percentage wise, how?
We always have that and it's a, it's it's around, it's round evenly split. Um weighted on affordable housing a little more than the other two.
Affordable housing gets a lot of.
But it's not like overwhelmingly, it's not like sixty percent affordable housing. It's like, what is it, less than forty percent?
I have to look, but you're right, the overall project allocations have been about.
It's it's pretty balanced.
Split between three categories.
Yeah, I mean, whether or not lately it's been more.
Is this something we wanna put on the next agenda for the August meeting?
Yeah, we definitely could.
Okay.
I mean, I think the the committee is generally interested in receiving proposals and letting that determine what the mix is going to be.
Okay.
As opposed to deciding like, no, we really want affordable housing this cycle, and so we're gonna dedicate this much money. And what that means is like, either we spend that percentage or if we only spend a certain part of that, then the other portion would then be put um would be earmarked, that amount of money would be earmarked for affordable housing in the future. Um which it could just be with the next year's ten percent and then add up to twenty five percent or whatever, but.
Okay.
So it's not.
Are you overwhelmed by proposals?
No, no, generally, we.
Do you prefer a little bit more to get more?
Um it would be nice to have to turn people away. No, no, it would have been nice to have to turn people away, but it would be. Yeah, I mean, we we sort of get, a lot of it is a lot of it is the same players that come. Um, you know, it's the same like uh CDC construct. Um come to us a lot for affordable housing, um the trust, of course. Um and then, yeah, the other things, it's, I guess, I guess that um for housing, it's pretty, it'd be nice to get like some little private like little developers that wanted to create affordable housing. Talk about that, we don't see it too often, like somebody that has a house and they wanna multi, multi-unit it.
Are you seeing the seed money for projects?
Yeah, and that's what's nice, what, so it can be two ki- two kinds of things which are really nice about um CPA money is that you can, it's it's can be money that's hard to find grants for. So like in the planning stage, it's hard to get kind of grant money for that, but CP CPA funds can be used for that. Um so that part's nice, and then also for like the town, what's nice about CPA funds is you don't like if the town or the trust wants to acquire um, meaning a part of the town. Um so I trust wants to acquire a property. Um they don't have to go through the same process that we would ordinarily with town funds. They can just grab it, so um the CPA funds, yeah. Are kind of new. Look.
All right, so we'll put that, we've got the last year's report and we'll put that on the agenda for the August eleventh meeting, I think it's August eleven. August. Pedro, can you?
Well. Um like I did, I think, when the that marijuana uh facility was proposed over Vanduzenville. I'd like to just bring up again the the problem that I see with having these high zones in our town that are basically like mostly islands within residential neighborhoods. We're gonna run across this issue, I think, over and over again, and we saw it with the project today where we're gonna get seriously incompatible uses. Um proposals for u- for uses like we did today and it it doesn't make any sense to me for the people who who live around these these areas. It doesn't make any sense. And the other thing that doesn't make any sense to me about the I-zone is the schizophrenia that really it has around housing. Now, unless I'm reading the table of uses incorrectly again, in the I-zone, you can't build a single-family house. But you can build a two-family house. You can't build any multifamily, but you can do a mixed-use project. And you can put an ADU in that. And when I say you can, you can do it all by writing. But you, so it'd be really nice to have a conversation, and I think the last time I brought this up, you know, Chris pointed out that we need industrial uses in town and that, to me, I'm just not really convinced that I'm that that we actually have do, at least in our town, considering how little land we have left to develop. Housing in particular, and the fact that, you know, most, I think a lot of the industrial. uh, uses around the county are not in our town. I mean, we have a lot, we have some. Anyway, that's my whole thing, I mean, the, the I zone to me is just problematic.
So you wanna look at the I zone in front of our zoning discussion?
I'd like to have a discussion about it, you know, and then if, if they, you know, they're gonna stay because I'm sure we, you know, everybody wants them and we need them, but at least we can look at again, what I, what I'm looking at, as a schizophrenia with house, because again, you can do some things that you can't and maybe somebody will propose a mixed-use project that'll have a seventy square foot, you know, barista in it and call it a mixed-use project, doesn't it mean?
In there.
You're right, exactly, so.
Okay. We can discuss it, so, anything else?
No thanks.
Malcolm?
Um, well, we had a housing subcommittee meeting and, um, we're going to be discussing, we'd like to be able to discuss that at the joint planning board, select board meeting.
That is one of the items.
Lee is gonna make a presentation of what are, you know, what, what we, progress we've made. And I would really like, uh, the meeting to, uh, uh, consider what, you know, renewing what the charter should be for that subcommittee, just so we're clear in terms of what we should be doing, what we should be accomplishing. Um, the other thing I had to say is, uh, um, I, I was elected, uh, chair, uh, chairman of the VRPC.
Congratulations.
So, uh, already started to attend meetings. Um, the last one was actually kind of interesting, I just wanna very briefly mention, uh, this is a regional issues committee and they've been exploring, um, uh, the difficulty filling jobs in the county. And, um, uh, there's just a couple pieces of data that I found particularly interesting. Uh, we have thirty towns in the county, twenty of the towns have under a thousand people. And these are the towns that are having trouble, uh, hiring people. Uh, eleven, they, it, they, uh, VRPC just did a survey of all the towns, twenty-three towns responded of the thirty. Um, eleven of those towns, uh, reported difficulties hiring town administrators and managers. Sixteen reported difficulties hiring town accountants, fourteen experienced difficulty hiring assessors, thirteen building inspectors, it's become a, a real critical problem in the county, and there's it's funny because this is not a planning board issue, it's really not even a VRPC issue, it's a, it's a town managers and, and, uh, and, uh, select board issue more than is a VRPC issue, but VRPC is the only, uh, county-wide entity that could actually bring these things up for discussion.
Saw an article this morning in Mayor Time, which, talking about exactly this, and it's all government-related.
Yeah, so, uh, some of the plans that came up were kind of interesting, you know, you know, part of it has to do with money, but a lot of it has to do with education and getting kids, uh, interested in a career in local government. And so they're approaching the community colleges here and in the Pioneer Valley, perhaps joining forces with, uh, um, uh, Franklin County and, and, uh, um, uh, you know, Hanover County and, and Berkshire County to, uh, uh, you know, try to develop some kind of educational framework or, um, uh, create a pipeline of people that might be interested or willing. Cause, uh, you know, the, the, you know, we have a couple, uh, town managers and select board, uh, chair, you sit in on these regional issue committee minutes. And they all reported that, uh, they are gonna have, like, within five, ten years, just this may have sex with us. Of retired people from, uh, from local government, there's not gonna be anybody to back. Uh, so, it's, it's facing a crisis situation. So anyway, that was, I thought you might be interested in some of those numbers.
Is that just, is that unique to the region or is that?
Excuse me, sorry, that's my dogs, that's my dogs, so. Yeah, it's national, it's a, it's a national problem, uh, actually, government positions, cause there's no sex in it, it's not.
And the, the argument that I've heard lately is like, convince people this is a mission job and get people excited about the idea, not just the low rate, low tax, you know, salaries. Um, it's mission, if you're doing something that you believe in versus something that you believe in, and it's.
That is, I mean, that, that's part of it, and part of the problem is that, uh, because they test reading and writing, they don't teach civics anymore. And, you know, and, and, you know, they, they test math, they test, uh, uh, English skills, but they don't test civic skills, so they don't teach it. Uh, and that's a byproduct of, you know, testing, it's been going on, really, is like teaching and testing.
I think that's a really good point, and this is wholly off this particular topic, but I did talk to Peter Dillon um, a couple of years ago about civics, and he had said that the state of Massachusetts had passed some curriculum requirements around civics, but they passed it and it was supposed to go into effect in twenty twenty, and we all know what happened in twenty twenty. So it's just been shelved.
Yeah.
But there, there is a body of legislation in Massachusetts that is supposed to reintroduce civics curriculum.
Is there money there too?
I, I, it's, it's been a couple of years since I talked to Peter about it, but, um, you know, I mean, he acknowledged, yeah, you know, kids don't know about it, I mean, I've taken my kids to vote, they know that they're, you know, I am their dad, volunteer in the community, but if you don't see that, there's almost no other avenue.
It's also mentality, I mean, it's a way.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
So, anyway, well, thank you, was there anything else?
No, that's it, thanks.
Alright, um, so citizens speak, does anybody have anything to add? See a couple of folks up there, hi Eileen, hope you're staying cool. Alright, if no hands are raised, then, uh, we'll adjourn at seven fifty-six and turn the air conditioning back on.